Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public participation and public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Piscuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you for that. This evening, we are blessed with having Pastor Greg Massur. Did I pronounce that right?
Man sir.
Man sir. He will be doing the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by councilperson Piscuali. You please stand.
Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, as we look back on this past year, we thank you for your many blessings in 2022. Every year brings with it a unique set of challenges and trials, but there are also joys, surprises, and wonders we could never have imagined. We praise you for every moment that continued contributed to our growth and understanding, and we look forward to your leading in the new year to come. We are so grateful, Lord, for Yuba City, not just the place where we live, but the place we call home. I thank you for these council members, their families, their staffs, and for all who serve our city so faithfully. Grant them your wisdom as they deliberate and decide the matters before them. May their first aim always be to the people who have called upon them to serve. As we view the fractured landscape of today's political discourse, may you guide these men in truth and compassion. Watch over our law enforcement community, our first responders, and all those who serve on the front lines on our behalf. Protect them and protect their families. Grant our educators a well-deserved rest this holiday season, and thank you for the investment they are making in the lives of our young people. Bless the nonprofits and churches and pastors who are seeking to make a difference in our community, ministering to the heart and the soul of every citizen. As we approach the day, we celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus. May our hearts be filled with the joy that comes in knowing a Savior has been born. It is indeed good news for all the people. May we walk in your light and in your love in this season and in all seasons. Please bless this evening. Please bless this meeting. Please bless this council. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda modifications? Seeing none, we're gonna move to public communication. Parents of interested citizens, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent counter or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitted written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their opinion of the group. Do we have any additional comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to that time. The council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. Do we have any comments from the public on the consent calendar items two through 17? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor. Move to approve consent calendar items two through 17.
I've got a motion from councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Piscuali. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay, moving on to business items. Number 18, levy of the 2023 annual assessment of the downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District, presentation by Diana Langley, the city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council. So on November 15th, council received a presentation from the Downtown Business Association, and you also considered the annual report for the Business Improvement District and set a public hearing for tonight. So after the public hearing, city council may take one of the following actions, and just to summarize, you can terminate the proceedings if protests are received from business owners in the proposed district who collectively pay 50% or more of the proposed assessment. You can order changes in any of the matters provided in the annual report. You can continue the public hearing with the understanding that the public hearing must be completed within 30 days. Or you can adopt a resolution confirming the annual report as originally filed or as amended, and staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution confirming the annual report and also approving the levy of assessments. The alternatives are to not levy the assessment or to identify alternate funding sources for downtown improvements and activities. So there's no direct fiscal impact associated with the item to the city. However, the Business Improvement District does allow for the DBA to do functions and promote the downtown businesses, and so through that, we collect sales tax when those businesses do well. And with that, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and after consideration, adopt a resolution. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Go ahead and open up the... Okay, so at this point, the public hearing on the levy of the 2023 annual assessment of the downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, I am now closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Could we just confirm with the city clerk that the city clerk did not receive any written protests on this matter?
No written protests were received.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming the annual report for the Yuba City Downtown Business Association and levying the assessment for the Downtown Business Improvement District for calendar year 2023.
I've got a motion by councilmember...
I'm Boomgarden.
I'll second.
And a second from councilmember Shaw. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes. Moving to agenda item number 19, community sponsorship request, Friends of the Marysville Stampede Cotton Rossar Memorial Bronze Statue, presentation by George Marlowe, management analyst.
We're gonna have a substitution. I'm gonna do the presentation tonight.
Oh, okay.
Since I'm up here.
One moment. Through the mayor. Just a point of clarification, after speaking with the city attorney, need to make it known for public record that I do not have to recuse myself as I submitted the paperwork because I'm not on the board for the Friends of the Marysville Stampede, nor am I compensated in any way. I'm just a fan like everybody else and already give them a check and here to help support, so there's no reason that I have to recuse, and I submitted it at their request.
Thank you.
So with that, you know, as I was writing the staff report and preparing this presentation, I didn't feel that it accurately expressed the contribution that Cotton Rossar and his family has made to our community. And so I have to say to the family, please excuse this presentation, because I don't feel like it does its adequate due diligence to, you know, represent him. So with that said, Cotton Rossar is legendary in the professional rodeo world, his hometown community of Marysville, and the Yuba Sutter area. And so to commemorate his status as a hometown hero, Memorial Bronze Statue has been commissioned to be placed at Plaza Park in Marysville. And if you look on the dais, thank you for bringing the cast of the proposed statue. With that, the plan is to create a one-and-one-quarter times life-size bronze statue of Cotton on his horseback, doffing his hat to the admiring crowd as he enters the rodeo ring. And the proposal is to have this done in 2023, in time for the stampede next year. So at the time that the request came across, a committee had raised just over 108,000 of the $270,000 that are required. Two anonymous donors came forward with a challenge grant offering $5,000 as a match for every dollar raised by December 31st, 2022. So the city received a request from the Friends of the Marysville Stampede to consider a $5,000 donation to the statue. The question would be, Cotton Rossar is from Marysville, why is the city of Yuba City considering a contribution to this statue? And there are many reasons. This family has been ingrained in the Yuba Sutter community. They have contributed significantly to the Yuba City area specifically. Proceeds from various fundraisers that they have done have gone to local nonprofits, including the Givicky Foundation and the Yuba City K-9 Association. And so just as much as the statue is gonna be placed in Marysville, it's really a representation of our entire community. So with that, the fiscal impact would be $5,000. Since this is a somewhat unique request, we're requesting that a supplemental appropriation be made of $5,000 from the Sister City account, as we're not going to have a Sister City delegation in this fiscal year. And so that would leave the remaining money in the community sponsorship account available for other agencies to come forward and request. The alternatives are to not authorize the contribution, authorize a different contribution, or not authorize a supplemental appropriation and go ahead and take it from the community contribution account. And the recommendation is to consider the sponsorship request from the Friends of the Marysville Stampede and adopt a resolution and authorize the finance director to make a supplemental appropriation. And with that, I know that Catherine Rossar is in the audience tonight, and if you would like to say a few words about the statue, we'd really appreciate it.
I'd first of all like to thank you for that introduction. My dad would have said that was way too much, so thank you for that, and thank you to the council, first of all, for even considering this support of this project. You know, as she mentioned, there was a reason that the cattle drive started in Yuba City and ended in Marysville, because even though my father was from Marysville, California, his number one goal was always to put Yuba Sutter on the map, both in the rodeo world and western entertainment world as a whole. So your consideration and support of this project means a lot to my family, my mom, and Nicole Rossar's here tonight as well with us. But, you know, when David Reed and the Yuba Sutter Arts Council came to us to propose this bronze project, you know, it's a huge undertaking. It's a large fundraising effort and one that they have been steadily raising funds for along the way, but the total game changer for us came with the anonymous match of the 75,000 by the end of the year. And with that, that was a game changer for our community, for our family, where the Friends of the Stampede and the Friends of the Friends of the Stampede, Jackie Solomon being one of them that's here tonight with us, stepped up and said, let's get this done. So we would have been remiss not to throw every single hat in the ring possible to get this done, and we appreciate your support of this project. As you can see, the statue on the tabletop is beautiful, and we have seen renderings of what it will look like when it comes to fruition. But the Friends of the Stampede, in collaboration with the Yuba Sutter Arts Council, are really leading to get this done and to get this done soon, to be one of the first large-scale art projects in Yuba Sutter. So we thank you for your support and appreciate your consideration, and long live the king of the cowboys. Thank you.
So do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor. I was wondering if we might be able to get an update from the Friends of the Friends of the Stampede on their efforts for the match.
So the Friends of the Stampede, we did launch an online raffle auction, and we put up two tickets to the national finals rodeo. Two tickets and two tickets alone got us nearly 20,000 just for that one effort. In addition to that, we've had additional commitments come through, slowly but steadily chopping down to that 75,000. So that is just the Friends of the Stampede component in addition to the efforts of the Arts Council that we are on target, that this money would be helping to get us in place to get this project started. So with just our committee and a little over a month's time, we should raise some money and some interest, and that was part of the reason, too, that we really wanted to promote the Friends of the Stampede, is within the western world, cowboys and the Friends of the Stampede has a little bit more of appeal, and cowboys and artists are a little bit different, we're all going with the same cause, but because of that, we were able to get some additional traction within the western world, just within a short months' time.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Through the mayor. Yes. How much money are we trying to get to? Will the 150 make the match? Will that meet your goal?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Through the mayor, I just have a couple of comments, and for those that hadn't been around, they know that we're quick to learn that rodeo is near and dear to my heart, and this family right here is a legend, and we have, pardon the inference in the French here, but we have a hell of an asset in our community. This family is well-known in the rodeo world, and they don't speak arts and crafts, they speak yee-haw and rodeo and ropes and horses and bucking bulls. That's what they speak. The outpouring has been phenomenal, and I just want to say thank you, guys, for, you know, when the match came up, taking the bull by the horn and getting this thing across the line, because I've, as you know, our family is in the rodeo business as well and reached out, and the pouring out that came out from all the rodeo committees across the western U.S., you know, it's like, everybody wanted to be a part of this, which is great, because the Rossar family and Cotton are, like I said, they're legends and they're living legends. But they're our living legends and our family here, so I think that's why it's much more important that we step up as a community and be a part of this, because we can't have something just a part of our community that gets funded by people all over the world. It's gotta be part of us, so you know where I stand. I'm the one who turned in the paperwork and signed it for you, so I think what Mark was trying to get at is earlier, is the 5,000 gonna keep you guys right on track and good?
Yes.
Okay. Then, through the mayor. If everybody's done with comments, I would like to make the motion that we approve the $5,000 award to the Friends of the Marysville Stampede for the bronze, and that we do the allocation as presented tonight in the presentation.
I have a motion from councilmember Shaw. Second. And I've got a second from councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Hit or done.
You know, I do have one quick question. Where's the eventual home gonna be?
Right next to the Silver Dollar, so the Riverfront Plaza area. Right there at the end of the cattle drive, and that was done intentionally, that that's the end of the cattle drive, so Cotton can watch it in perpetuity each year.
Wow. That's quite a cool idea.
Been around there for centuries.
Wow. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna take my dad if you don't mind me. He's leaving us a ride. I'm gonna stay for you now.
Okay, moving along. Item 20, consideration of letter of support for Adventist Health's proposed Project Hope, presentation by Diana Langley, city manager.
So, for background, the former Fremont Hospital site located on Pluma Street north of Highway 20 is owned by Adventist Health and Rideout and has not been in operation since 2017. And I have to say, in terms of questions from the public, this is probably one of the questions that council gets asked the most. What is gonna happen to the old hospital site? So it's very exciting to have a proposal from Adventist here. And so here's the location. Here's the old hospital, here's the tower building, so if you're looking at it from the street, here's the old hospital and the tower building. In addition, Adventist owns these vacant properties to the west, and then their former administration office is right here. So they're proposing a medical campus called Project Hope, which would provide medically necessary services to the most vulnerable populations. As I mentioned, Ashton Phillips, the system director for Adventist Health, is here tonight to provide more specifics related to the project, and she has prepared a presentation. So with that, Sierra, could you please pull up Ashton's presentation? And the request of council tonight is a letter of support, and Ashton can go into a little bit more detail, they're applying for grants, and so they're requesting a letter of support from city council. All right, Ashton.
Hi. Okay, I think this is the microphone here. Everybody can hear me, I can hear myself pretty loud. Okay, so hello, everybody, thank you so much. I'm gonna get a little bit emotional. This has been a long time in the making, this project and the efforts that have gone into it, and so I just want to thank everybody who's here today to listen. I appreciate the time and the consideration, so I just want to say thank you. We'll kick it off here. So I wanted to start today and just let you know that we are here today in partnership with several partners. The Sutter and Yuba Health and Human Services, Sutter Yuba Behavioral Health, Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium, our Managed Care Plans, Anthem, California Health and Wellness, and countless community partners, such as law enforcement, the Salvation Army, our healthcare providers here locally. And today, we want to present to you a project of hope. I have to click a button and change a page, so bear with me here. Today, we are proposing the repurposing of the Fremont Rideout Hospital in Yuba City to create a campus that will offer a suite of services to our most vulnerable populations with the most complex health and social needs. These are seniors, persons with disabilities, and those who are homeless. These services set out to increase the overall quality of life and the well-being of those here in the Yuba Sutter region. These services will also assist our acute care hospital. This will assist the hospital with wait times, with patient satisfaction, and provide that appropriate service to connect individuals to care that they seek and care that they need. These healthcare-related services address social determinants of health, and they will be added to services, services that don't currently exist in our community but that are so desperately needed. So today, we are here to ask for that letter of support, to pursue the funding of the development of this project and the services that we have proposed. While we know many additional conversations with the community and others will need to occur around the services that could be offered at this site, we wanted to take the first step and address that here with you tonight. For the purpose of this project, we will be utilizing the hospital tower. Thank you, Diana, for providing that beautiful picture, that was so great. We plan to demo the middle part. So we have the large hospital tower on the south end, we have the middle part that is asbestos-ridden, so we will have to demo that portion. And then to the north of that building, there's a three-story building, technically, one story is underground, so it looks like it's two stories, that will be able to keep and utilize further down the road. It is important to keep this campus both secure and private for the clients, for the outward appearance, and for, really, for the community. This location is gonna have full-time security, so 24-hour security, 24-hour support staff, 24-hour clinical staff as well. We will also be planning transportation services so that when individuals leave the campus, they're able to get to their next destination. In addition to the services that we're going to provide, each floor is going to have some common space, a common area for individuals to congregate, for individuals to watch TV, to do other small activities. One of the biggest portions of this project that I think is really important to the outward appearance and to the privacy of those that are in our facility is that middle portion where we will be tearing down the building. We will be building a private rec area, so a private, enclosed, outdoor area where individuals can recreate who are currently in the program. This will prevent and cut down on potential loitering that you might see outside of the building, which will be prohibited and strongly enforced. We intend to be the best possible neighbor. We intend to have a direct line where individuals can call with concerns that may arise from So in addition to all of the proposed services that we have here, the medical recuperative care, the short-term post-hospitalization housing, Adventist Health, Health and Human Services, and Behavioral Health are all working together to define and craft the behavioral health services offered on this campus. We have multiple upcoming meetings to further define the proposed services and to create an increased access to those behavioral health services that really we desperately need in our community. For example, Adventist Health sees an average of 200 individuals experiencing behavioral health crisis in the emergency room every single month. I know that you can look at these services and think all homelessness, but this campus sets out to serve far more than just those individuals that are experiencing homelessness. In Sutter County alone, there's 46,000 individuals that have Medi-Cal as their insurance provider. These are seniors, these are individuals with disabilities, and who have limited income. This campus will serve those individuals as well and bring healthcare infrastructure to Sutter County that can grow and develop much-needed services that we do not currently have. We aim to serve individuals that have been pulled over for a DUI, who would typically be brought to jail or to the emergency room. But instead, they will be sent to safely sober in our facility that will have resources and peer navigators to help engage that person, to provide support towards treatment. The campus will also be for, for example, your grandmother, who lives alone, who has no additional support in her home, but still needs time to recuperate and to recover from potentially a surgery that she had in the hospital, not quite ready to discharge home, doesn't quite qualify for a skilled nursing facility, but needs a place to go, a place to recuperate that has services. This campus will serve that community. Individuals that will be utilizing the services on this campus will be the individuals that are our residents, that are currently utilizing our hospital, utilizing our emergency room, possibly not having a place to transition to. For example, someone who needs sobering does not need care from a Level 3 trauma center. Supportive services highlighted here are meant to provide the highest level of support for our program participants. We intend to provide the highest level of wraparound care and enhanced care management. Our staffing structure will include more than just medical health professionals. It'll include social workers, case managers, peer navigators, such as a substance use navigator, as well as housing navigators. All of these services are extremely important to the success of the client in transitioning out of the facility and landing in a better place than they first arrived. For example, the case management and housing navigation services will allow for a client-centered plan, so a plan that's directly centered at the client and their needs. We create those care plans to help them transition successfully, for example, assisting someone with obtaining social security for their health condition, or assisting them with applying for a housing unit, as well as being able to pay for that housing deposit. We also have services such as dehabilitation. These services intend to teach those life skills in a classroom setting and in a one-on-one setting. The service outlined here are mostly referral-based services as well. For example, those in medical recuperative care will be referred and transported to the hospital, to the facility by the hospital. Sobering will be transported by ambulance or by PD. Sobering will be transported by ambulance or by PD. Individuals will also transition from one service, one level of care, to the next. The only service here that will be a walk-in basis would be the Behavioral Health Urgent Care. This is an outpatient clinic that's really designed for individuals with behavioral health crises. So I wanted to bring attention to that specifically because it does cut down on that foot traffic. There's not going to be people walking in and out referring themselves to these types of services. I also want to bring attention to the Overnight Wellness Recovery Center. This portion is defined by one of the grants that we're looking to apply for as providing respite-type shelter in a home-like setting. This is temporary housing shelter. This is a component that is designed to serve individuals who may not qualify for medical recuperative care, who may not qualify for short-term post-hospitalization housing, or perhaps they have exhausted those resources and their days in these programs, but they still require the support in the facility. They could discharge from the hospital, someone who maybe doesn't have a managed Medi-Cal but still requires these services. Maybe they have significant mobility impairments and are not able to go to one of our shelters here locally. Potentially, they need oxygen and are not able to go to one of the shelters here locally. To give an idea of what we are currently experiencing in our hospital, right now, we have four patients who have been in the hospital over 100 days, one of those individuals being in the hospital for 197 days. We have five additional patients who are nearing that 100-day mark. We currently have 32 individuals who have been in the hospital for more than 15 days. So that's 15 all the way up to that 65 number. This campus could really assist in the transition of those individuals to an appropriate level of care, freeing up those hospital beds, and getting folks to the location that is really going to meet their need and address their social needs as well. This project is no easy build. We are envisioning some pretty big, significant services here, which come with pretty significant infrastructure costs. You guys have all drove by that building, I'm sure. You know how large it is, and you know the amount of work that it's going to take to get that building to provide any level of service. This type of braided funding that we have up here is really going to be a once-in-a-lifetime kind of funding. This funding is really meant to change lives, to make the biggest impact. I sincerely feel that we are all called in our life to do something, to take action, and to make a difference. And I do believe that this project is our calling. You can see all the different braided fundings up here that we are looking at. Behavioral health funding, path funding through CalAim, significant funding through partner agencies as well. So CMSP is a county medical service program, so we're looking to partner with our different agencies to ensure that a program like this can come to fruition. And then when we talk about sustainability, almost all of the programs and elements of the programs and the supportive services that I have talked about today are going to be billable and reimbursable. So in summary today, our goal is really to create a safe place for our most vulnerable community members by providing services that are needed and that are missing in our community. We plan to lead with excellence and create a space that you and the community can be proud of, a space where other jurisdictions will come in. They will ask us about our design. They will ask us about the services. They will ask us about the concept and really seek to understand how this level of collaboration was able to come together to do something so special, a program that really is going to change the lives of so many of our community members. And we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
I'll wait till you do the public first, please.
We do have a speaker card. Mr. Johnny Burke?
Try that again. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Good to see you all tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Sutter-Yuba Homeless Consortium, of which I am the executive director, just to let you know that we really support this project. This project that Adventist is proposing, it meets so many gaps. Ashton mentioned how this will be servicing a variety of vulnerable populations, including homeless, which obviously I represent quite a bit of. And I just wanted to share some numbers because as I looked over Project Hope and the services that'll be provided, I thought, well, I wonder how many people we could help with that. And last year, in the calendar year of 2021, we kept a record of every client that came through either one of the coordinated entry sites in Sutter and Yuba County. We have two walk-in sites, Life Building Center over Marysville and Hands of Hope here in Yuba City. And through those two sites, we saw over 3,300 clients come through last year, folks that were either homeless or at risk of being homeless. And so of that group, we had 1,505 people that came through for at least one day that were clients that had some sort of disabling condition. Now, it's not just Sutter County, that's Sutter and Yuba. I'm sorry, I don't have the breakdown because it's a cumulative number. But that was 45% of the folks that are served through coordinated entry and through our partner agencies. Disabling conditions are substance use disorders. My goodness, I should have had my glasses on. Man, you get to this age, and you know how it goes, guys. Severe mental illness, developmental disabilities, chronic health conditions, HIV, or physical disabilities. Really, every one of those categories would be addressed by Project Hope. We are excited and just ecstatic that Adventist is proposing this because it meets so many gaps in our community right now for servicing folks that are homeless. I know there's a variety of folks here that work with people experiencing homelessness in our area and can tell you that one of the, that sobering center is like a dream come true. We have some awesome programs through Sutter-Yuba Behavioral Health. They have a great new program called Start to Finish, where if someone is interested in going through substance use treatment, they can be placed in one of our shelters for a couple of days before they're able to get into hopefully an inpatient center. And this would meet a goal right then because a lot of our shelters that we use for that are not ideal for folks that are trying to sober up who have a severe substance use issue. This is an ideal situation, and that's just one of the many facets of it. So just wanted to let you know that what Adventist is doing is incredible. I would estimate that at a maximum, the funding that we receive through state and federal that we would only be able to provide maybe $200,000, $300,000 over the next couple of years to support this program, which they've got braided in with their funding. Of course, RFPs have to go out, I can't say anything for certain, but we're talking about a dozens-of-million-dollar project that Adventist is just looking for a letter of support tonight from the city to be able to put this all together. So it's just an apt gift for our community. It would be a gift for us to be able to provide additional services to those experiencing homelessness that are residents in our area. So just wanted to just let you know that we support that and give you some stats as you consider doing that letter of support. And I know all of you have my number, and Councilman Pascual, you've got it now, I put it in your hand earlier. So if anyone has any questions about any other statistics that would apply to that, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public on this item? Questions from the public? Okay, any questions, comments from the council?
Through the mayor. First, I want to offer my thanks to Jackie Solman and Chris Champlin for taking a meeting with me. I don't remember how many months it was ago. I was doing business over by the tower, and I walked by there every day on the way to the post office, and I thought, you know, we've got to do something here. And they were gracious enough to sit with me and start talking about, you know, possibilities for that tower. That was followed up with an invitation that the then-mayor, Dave Shaw, and I had to go over to the hospital where Ashton presented Project Hope, and holy heck, what a home run. You know, now not only did we have some concepts, but it looked like there was a framework for support. And, you know, here we are tonight, trying to move forward with this, which I think for Yuba City is, I do agree with you. I think if this thing comes the way it comes together, the way it looks like it may come together, you will have folks coming from all over to take a look at it. And I don't know why we wouldn't want to be a part of that as a city. I do want to share, unfortunately, my mom has been a customer of the ER over the last two or three weeks, and just to see the number of people in the hospital. So I appreciate the comments by Mr. Burke, but there is this other stuff that's going on, you know, this recuperative care and all these things that can take some of the load off the hospital in a myriad of different things that are going on that this project brings to our community. And to me, that, you know, again, that's like hitting for the cycle in baseball. You're, Mr. Burke knows what I'm talking about. You're doing, you're getting all, you're doing all the things that we need to do. You know, near and dear to me right now, and those folks that are on the senior commission have heard me say this before, we've got a big problem with seniors and vets and homelessness right now. We've got, you know, we've got a problem with homelessness, period. So does the state, and so does the nation. But I mean, I'm looking forward to what we can do for our seniors and our vets with this project as well because they are on that tipping point or that verge of not getting care or being displaced out of a home and being out on the streets. And that's something that I think is a city that anytime we can partner, especially with Adventist Health, I think is going to be a good thing for the city. So I'll close by saying that thank you for your graciousness to include us in partnership as you discuss this project. I hopefully look forward to see this thing happen in my final four years here on the council, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Chris, thanks to you and your team for meeting with us, and as Councilmember Boom Garden said, you know, wow, we've heard for the four years we've been here, why don't they do something with Fremont? Why don't they do something with Fremont? And we heard a rendition about four years ago, and you guys brought together the project here. I like the concept, but I would be remiss if I also didn't share my concerns with you at the same time because what you hit on, if it's that continuum of care for the healthcare system, that benefits the entire population because, as he said, going to the ER, I hear people, and we just have to be real in here, I hear people in our community that they won't go to the ER at Rideout because it's too impacted. They will be there. I had the misfortune a few years ago of my wife having to go by ambulance to the ER, only as I pulled up, she's being pushed out, and then after about eight hours, we just left and went home. So if this continuum of care can take that pressure off, fully support that, and that benefits the entire community. And my only concern is because it has all of these tentacles or parameters that it helps all the community. We've got seniors, we've got veterans, we do have homeless, we've got people that need these services, but I don't want us to get, as the politically, and thing right now is homelessness, I don't want us to get totally focused on that because there could be a component of that, but this has to be something that takes that burden off because we do suffer in our community from healthcare. We are not adequately healthcared in California as a whole, and we only have one hospital that is doing everything they can, but, you know, from every thing you can imagine being thrown at you, it's a tremendous obstacle you're trying to overcome and help people. So I think this will take it off. I'm in favor of supporting it, but at the same time, I want to make sure that our focus stays on the health aspect of this. We've got people that are addicted to drugs. Doesn't matter if they're homeless or if they're in a 16-room mansion, they're addicted and they need help. Same thing with alcoholism. Same thing with, like, your mom, you know? She might need to go from point A to point B to get care. We need to make sure that's there before we divert on into other things. That's my only concern, so.
Chris, would you like to come up? I probably should have introduced him earlier. Everybody, this is Chris Champlin, our hospital president, our fearless leader.
Sorry, Chris, I just kind of spoke directly to you because I know you're the fearless leader.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I feel like my comments are going to pale in comparison to you. You just, you gave the speech. Yeah, you know, this is exactly what this is for. I'm going to repeat some of what Ashton said. Two weeks ago, we had a bit of a surge. So we had a lot of flu, we had RSV, we had COVID. We were doing 250 patients a day of really, really sick people. Now, why do I say that? You know, a year ago, actually, at the beginning of this year, we had days where we were doing 350 emergency room visits a day for COVID. But in fairness, a lot of those were just patients who were coming in to be tested, right? They weren't showing symptoms. So the last few weeks, we've had really, really, really sick people who had to be admitted. Now, we had 40 patients in the hospital taking up beds who weren't sick. You heard Ashton talk about it, you know, 200 days. Those patients don't need to be there, and the fact that they're there means that somebody who needs that bed doesn't get it. We need infrastructure, we need infrastructure, we need infrastructure, right? I mean, you made the argument just now. So that's what this does for us. Is it going to get us all the way there? No, but it's a giant step in the right direction. So if we can get some of those 40 people out of the hospital, out of the acute beds, into this facility, now we have room, now we've disimpacted our emergency department. You've heard me say this before, I'm very, very proud of the door-to-dock time, right? You get in, you're seen within 11 minutes. That's fantastic, and then you sit there for 24 hours waiting for a bed, right? That's not okay. So we have to have this for additional infrastructure, and your support is the first step in getting us there. So I'd be happy to answer any more questions, but I appreciate you both supporting this.
Through the mayor. I just have some concerns that this will be a magnet, but I think these gentlemen have discussed it about the homelessness. You know, you start putting projects together, and it goes across the state like a wildfire, and you get this influx of people coming to an area like, wow, we've got this great thing going on in Yuba City. That concerns me. That concerns me for the neighborhood, concerns me for the city. That's my only reservation about this at this point. I get what you're going to do, but as long as we control that aspect of this and make it a magnet for homeless destination, then I'm for it. So that's my only concern.
Yeah, I make two comments about that, and I think if we're coming across this presentation that this is a homeless shelter, then we're not doing it right, right? This is not what this is. You heard about the recuperative care, right? The transitional care, getting those patients who are not sick but living in the hospital out. There is a component that will take care of the homeless population, but that's not the whole thing. So how this gets presented is very, very important. And do I have, do we have all of the answers on how we're going to control this? No. You saw the list of all the agencies that are working with us, right? We just heard it. So we're working on that phase. We're very, very mindful of it. In my conversations with each of you individually, we've talked about that. So it is top of mind for us, and we will continue to address it as we go forward. I appreciate it.
What else I would add to that is that we need this service in our community. The service is designed specifically for our community based off of the numbers that we've looked at in our community, and we have plenty of population to go around to fill up these beds before we ever would even, which we're not, considering trying to support other individuals coming in. We don't have the, I don't have the numbers, Johnny might know on the top of his head, the number of individuals that are actually transplant to our community and from other locations, but that would be something interesting to share with you also. I think in addition to that, the services that are provided here are covered by our Managed Medi-Cal Plans in our county. So California Health and Wellness, Anthem, individuals that will go in here will have those specific benefits. To have those benefits, you do have to be a resident of this community, and you have to be a resident for, like, 30 days in order to actually get those benefits enrolled, too. So this is a project for our community, for Yuba and Sutter. for Yuba and Sutter.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
I appreciate your question.
So thank you for an excellent presentation, by the way. I'm trying not to repeat what's already been said. If you've been in one of these seats up here, you've been asked all the time, what are you going to do with Fremont Hospital? Those of us that lived our whole lives realize what, remember what it was and what it's become, and why don't you do with something with it? And here we have a great opportunity, it appears, to address that. I would encourage to educate, educate, educate when it comes to the neighborhoods around there. You know, you want to get in front of that? If not, it can go the wrong way. But thank you, thank you very much for that presentation. And if there's no further comments, I'll bring them back to the council for action.
Through the mayor. It looks like the recommendation is to consider and approve a request for a letter of support for Project Hope and provide that to our city manager.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Boomgarden.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Shaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it.
Thank you all. I really appreciate your time and your consideration very greatly.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Agenda item 21. Tree Maintenance Service Bid Award. This is going to be presented by Spencer Morrison, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. City of Yuba City has over 13,500 trees that we're responsible for. Over the past 14 years, Parks Maintenance has contracted tree maintenance services due to staffing levels and budget constraints. Tree maintenance is vital for the safety of the public, health of the trees, and supports our Tree City USA designation that was brought to you at a recent meeting. Services will include a share of tree maintenance in the districts, parks, and long city streets, and emergency callouts. Having the audience today, I want to point out that there's a member of Richards Tree Service with us, Richard Graham. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Mark, I'm sorry, Mark Graham. And we have Rob Condry, Parks and Grounds Superintendent as well. Sorry, Mark, I haven't written down correctly even. The city doesn't have the staff available to maintain all 13,500 trees. So Parks Maintenance and Finance staff collaborated on an RFP, Request for Proposal, for tree maintenance services to ensure the city is receiving the best service at the best price. The initial term of the contract will be for one year with the option of two one-year extensions at the city's request. That'll actually be at the, under the direction of the city manager. And future extensions, amendments, and cost changes are to be approved, again, by the city manager. Finance informed five known vendors of the bid notice. We reached out to vendors in the region. We also published two legal notices in the Appeal Democrat. Six bids were received by the city at the time of the bid opening. Three staff members independently evaluated each proposal on the following criteria. As you can see, it's cost compliance with the RFP, capability, experience, qualifications, and references. The respondents are scored and ranked here. You can see that the Richards Tree Service ranked number one. We did have some other regional services as well, including another Yuba City-based company called Yellow Tree. So based on the scoring results, city staff recommends awarding the tree maintenance services contract to Richards Tree Services, Inc. of Marysville, California, in the not-to-exceed amount of $300,000. The contract includes the option of two one-year extensions as approved by the city manager. And I do want to reiterate, we tried to say it in the staff report, I want to say, I want to say it out loud, that this isn't committing the city necessarily to, for sure, $300,000 tree maintenance expense. But we do have a lot of unknowns throughout the year, especially this time of year with storms, windstorms, heavy rain, and weather. And we do utilize contract services to help keep the streets clear and keep people safe as well. So there's some unknowns in there. And with that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
I would like to say that I'm happy that it appears that we're going to go with a local company. So I'm excited about that. If there's no further questions, I'll bring them back to the council for action.
Through the mayor. Before we do that, could we open it up to the public for comment?
Open up to the public for comment? Anyone for the public for comment? Okay. Seeing none. Bring it back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt a resolution awarding a contract for Richards Tree Service, Inc. of Yuba City, California, in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for one year for tree maintenance service with an option of two one-year extensions, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract amendments and extensions with the findings in the best interest of the city.
So I've got a motion by Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Squally. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Hey, moving along to agenda item 22, Septic Haller Fee Update. Presentation by Mr. Ben Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director. Mr. Moody.
Good evening. All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the item before you, as titled, is really in regard to reviewing our septic hauler rates, and just looking at that to see where we're at, and if it's time to update them to be competitive. And so I'll walk you through a few slides here to give the background and a proposal. So the water treatment facility, the wastewater treatment facility provides septic dumping location for commercial septic haulers. So your Roto-Rooter, the, gosh, I was drawing a blank on, we have a local guy that's right across the street there.
Fletcher's.
Fletcher's. Fletcher's Plumbing. So we have these various establishments in town, the county, there's, and even in the Keyhole area, across the area, they're on septic. And so it's really to pump the, contractors pump those tanks, and then they haul it off to a location to dispose of. So the fees for septic calling were analyzed based on effluent loading. And so that's a fancy term for just the concentration. So, and so when those rates were analyzed, there was a formula that was worked out that basically said, hey, this stuff is really potent compared to shower water. And so they established a rate based on that. And then back in 2016, there was, they were also analyzed, and then we put an inflator on there that was, that was across the rates. And so they put a COLA or inflation factor on there that then, that then brought that concentrated rate, and then it was, and it's been annually updated. And so when staff's looking at this, what we've seen is that just a substantial drop in usage. And so over since 1617 fiscal year, you're seeing where our gallons were up around 850,000, 950,000, and then we've been significantly declining. And so when we took a closer look at that, and then with that, based on the rate structure that's per gallon, really what we're, what we're doing is, is our revenue intake is decreasing. So this graph, the blue is the gallons, the orange red here is the, is the revenue. And so, no, I got that reversed. And so the orange is the gallons, the blue is the revenue. We dropped it on the same map here. But they're directly related as to why they're similar. But you can see the 1718 peak, and then we're dropped, and then there's kind of a small update here. Just a small increase. And so from this, when you look at it, it's like, you know, we really priced ourselves out of the market, is really what. And so when we started calling around to look what's going on, the input is, that's exactly what we're hearing, is that current former septic hauler customers report that they have stopped or reduced their discharging due to the high non-competitive rates. We called seven comparable agencies, four of which were direct competitors within 45 miles. And what we really found is that as of fiscal year 2223, as of July 1st, with the planned increase, we're going to be 80% out compared to that median average. And so with that, here's a quick overview of some of the rates. And so you see, right now, we're headed towards 48 cents per gallon as of July 1st, based on this inflation factor, where you really have Butte County, and some of these SAC regional facilities, you know, 5 cents, 12 cents, 21 cents, with the median being 8.5. And so really, the 10 cents, it's not, it's not a fancy calculated number. It's really what this number is, is, hey, the median's 8.5. Yellow County, Butte County, where its competition is 12 to 21. I'm looking at this number and say, hey, let's make it 10 cents, and then give me some time as I do a rate study and a full-depth analysis to bring me back in line with where we're, where we need to be. And so there's some flexibility in this tonight. And so definitely when you have a consideration, if you want to look at those numbers, it's definitely an option. But there's no magic to the 10 cents on how it landed there. It's just a nice round number, and it's, it's, it's within, near the median, and it doesn't adjust with the inflation factor. So if I set it at the median 8.5 cents, I wouldn't come back in July and then bump it up another 8%. I'm just saying 10%, hold that number until we do a utility rate study next year. With that, we also looked at the fees. And so when they come in, they have to do an application, contact information, provide insurance for dumping. And the fees with that inflation factor, we think in the structure, we just got out of whack, where you could see the annual renewal is 545 bucks, which is more than the initial application, the 250. And so we're just saying, hey, we called these other agencies, a lot of them don't have an application fee. We do feel that there is some value in that, making sure we get the insurance and a little bit of staff time that deals with that. But let's bring it back into what we consider the time spent on that is. So with that, going forward, we would definitely have outreach, that if we move forward with this, there would be outreach to try to regain those customers, because we don't want to just drop our rates and then nobody knows that we're doing this. And so we'd reach back out to those septic haulers, try to get them to be customers again, instead of driving the 45 miles, save the gas, and come to us. Also, with the future, I want to hit on that again, is that Public Works is working on reviewing our utility rates for the water and the wastewater plant this next year. And so it's with inflation, with, with cost for power, with cost for labor. But this is, would be a component of that utility rate study, just to see where those rates need to be. And then putting in the consideration that it's, we can look at it there, as far as, hey, are we looking at just based on loading versus some other criteria that we could kind of keep it in line with a regional standard? So with that, tonight, I'm requesting that you adopt a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges for the city services to update the fees for septic waste disposal for fiscal years 2223 and 2324 to the below Proposition 218 approved limits. So as presented in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public? Okay, I'll bring it to the council.
I have a quick question through the mayor. Ben, I should have asked this earlier, so I apologize. Where are they going now from around here if they're not using us?
You know, when I talked to Adam Fletcher with Fletcher's Plumbing, a lot of them are going to Butte County.
Okay.
And then I, I didn't talk to Roto-Rooter. I'd have to ask my analyst about that. But I think the four within 45 miles was the SAC Regional Plant, Butte County, and then Yellow County. I doubt they're going to Bakersfield, but that is a comparison.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Through the mayor. Director Moody, did you do a model of, if you go back to the old volumes that we were getting of waste to the new, to the new cost, the new price that you're going to charge? Did you do any kind of a study like that? I mean, is it going to, are we going to get, because of volume, are we going to get back to numbers that are the revenue?
You know, they did. And so, I mean, depending on which, which volume, you know, I don't think we're going to go right back to 950 gallons, 950,000 gallons. But we're thinking that we could increase it and be making $150,000 more than we are now. We could back up to the $300,000 until we really analyze and look at it. But there's awfully some projections on how fast we could get the customers to come back. And with an understanding that we might have, because we're lowering the rate and not increasing the volume. So I don't want to, I definitely, the outreach is a key component, because I don't want to now make less. But I think we've just priced ourselves out of the market, and we got to get back.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
All right, through the mayor.
Yes.
Let's adopt a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges for the city services to update the fees for septic waste disposal for fiscal years 2223 and 2324 to below the Prop 218 approved limits.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Squally. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. I guess I have the next presentation. Right? So as a newly-minted mayor, one of the first responsibilities you have is to make the assignments for the boards and commissions for the council. And a lot of, hopefully a lot of thought went into this. I think it did. You need to look at continuity is important, and who's, who's got the best experience, and the best fits. And so we're looking at the current proposed boards and commissions assignments on the board up there. Do we have any comments on the public from this item? Any comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll bring them back to the council.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council assignments to regional boards and committees for the calendar year of 2023.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Boomgarden.
A second.
And a second from Councilmember Shaw. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion's approved. Moving along, future agenda items. This is an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items to come up to date in a meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Do we have any members, any comments from the public? Nope. Okay. Moving right along. Reports and communications. The following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. We will start with the city manager's report.
All right, thank you. First of all, I would like to recognize Chief Baker, as he graduated from the 284th FBI Academy. That was 12 weeks away from his family immersed in the FBI Academy. And it's quite the accomplishment to even get accepted into the program, and then to graduate from their program is exceptional. So congratulations to Chief Baker. We have city hall closure starting next Monday, so December 26 through January 2. We do not have a council meeting on January 3. Our next council meeting will be January 17. We also have a council strategic split. We also have a council strategic planning slash goal setting session scheduled for January twenty-sixth, all day at the Harvest Room. And I want to talk about the holiday truck parade, which we just completed. This is an idea that Chief Alexander, who I believe is on teams, brought forward this concept of running a fire engine through town to, you know, bring holiday cheer, and it expanded into a truck parade. And Sierra's got a presentation up right now that shows some of the pictures from the parade. And then also, there were a significant amount of staff members that volunteered time and participated to decorate, and it was very rewarding to be a part of it and well received by the community. So I want to thank council for supporting this concept and supporting this parade. I want to thank Shannon and his firm, because they provided a monetary contribution to the parade as well. And Sierra, if you could go continue with the slides. We've got pictures with the council members with Santa. So, thank you very much for supporting this, and it just shows how the employees come together as a team. They really embrace this project, and the creativity was amazing, and the feedback and the embracing of the event was great from the public. So thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you for that. Moving to city council reports, we're going to begin with Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mayor. Normally, my reports are short. This one's going to be a little bit longer. I'll start with congratulations to Chief Baker, sacrifice of family and time and everything else, but congratulations. I know not only the the stuff you learn, but the networking, I'm sure, will benefit the citizens, and thank you for taking your personal time as well to attend. And I would give a shout out, if you will, to Commander Runyon and Commander Eschman for trying to fill your shoes. They did okay.
They did a good job. On the parade, wow. You know, to to staff, you know, just a phenomenal effort. I think one of the estimates for decorating any of the vehicles was, you know, in excess of fifteen to twenty hours that they they took the time to do. The outpouring of support, at least in the, I did District Two, you know, seeing people out on their driveways with fire pits and and heaters and, you know, making it, you know, a community event. We've created, or not me, staff has created memories, probably lifelong memories, and a tradition now in this city that no matter what happens, I don't think we'll be able to change it. So I think we'll be doing parades for a while now. But it was it was fun not only to be a participant, but it was great just to see the enthusiasm of our Uba City employees, but the public as well. And we even turned one Grinchy person into more of a Christmasy person, and she knows who she is. I'm going to run down a few things. So over the weekend, you're probably aware that Angie Gates and her team of So You Can were in town. This isn't just something that that happens in South Uba County, which is where it started. There was a lot of effort to provide food and presents to Uba City residents as well. So, you know, I want to make sure that Angie and her team understand how grateful we are that they brought that, they bring that into the city of Uba City. As far as meetings, I covered transit for the then mayor. The only thing that was discussed at those meetings were some audits. I'm not going to bore you with the details. They're they're there if you want it. That meeting was led led by, of course, our now mayor, Wade Kirchner. Regional Housing Authority, sort of, again, administrative stuff, wrapping up the end of the year. I will say that the credits that we were looking to get or hoping to get for the rather large, I think it's a hundred and seventy unit project that we have on the north side of Richland Housing, those did not come through in this particular funding cycle. However, we will be reapplying, and as those funding cycles occur, it's our hope at the Regional Housing Authority that we do get those tax credits. Home Key, we continue to have meetings with folks on a potential home key application. And something that was mentioned here a minute ago, I think it's important when we talk about projects like this, that, yes, there's a homeless component, but they're also affordable housing. And, you know, that there's a connotation of homeless that sometimes isn't what it really should be. These projects are, especially this one we're taking a look at, is is affordable housing, which can take some folks certainly off the street, but it can also prevent some folks from getting on the street. So look forward to those continuing discussions. Had the opportunity to go to a police department swearing in ceremony for an officer and a dispatcher. It's always good to go to those. Handled the X, the X, handled the Christmas tree lighting down on Pluma Street. Thanks staff for coming along on that. We also had representatives from the county there that evening, and councilperson Pescuali and I represented the city. Wreaths Across America, that's the annual recognition of our veterans who have passed in our community. Again, it's always well attended. This year, we were quite a bit light on wreaths, so we didn't weren't able to get all those out at the Sutter Cemetery covered. I'm not sure, I think Councilman Pescuali will talk about the Uba City effort. Lot of ribbon cuttings, which is good. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on with businesses. It seemed like every night, had an opportunity to go to another spot. Cookin' Pot, which reopened here about six months ago, served a fantastic clam chowder, by the way, in addition to the mess that everyone's familiar with. Then Taco Twist over in the Rayleigh Shopping Center, kind of a fusion of Mexican and East Indian food together, really good. And then, of course, Turner's Outdoor Store in the in the mall. And I'm looking forward to, in the future here, recognizing the Uba Sutter Mall, Ethan Conrad and his team, for the efforts that they're bringing to the city of Uba City, not only in bringing in business, but apparent the appearance of some of our brick and mortar shopping areas. I'll close with just wishing everyone a very happy holiday, very Merry Christmas, very safe. It looks like weather's going to be okay here, not across the rest of the country, but know that, you know, while everyone's celebrating holidays, we do have some folks that are out out taking care of the city, our police, our firefighters, our public works personnel. So anyway, just sign off to at this particular point in time, Merry Christmas to the council, Merry Christmas to staff, and I guess we'll get together at the end of the beginning of next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pescuali.
Thank you, Mayor. Been indoctrinated, no, I didn't say that, I didn't say indoctrinated. I've been helped tremendously by the staff, being up to speed. I appreciate that. I am tech not, not techno, and I've had some glitches, but Assistant Deputy Director Janko has been very helpful to me. Thank you, David, I appreciate that. Went to the Fire Police Breakfast, which was very well attended, and I had a great time meeting all the people and the firefighters and all the people that know me as Uncle Mike were there as well. Wreaths Across America, I was at the Uba City Cemetery, which a lot of people don't even know we even have a little cemetery, but I was very, very impressed with how it is maintained. Got a little emotional talking about, because I couldn't go to Sutter, because that's where my father, a Korean veteran, was buried. But had a real good visit with some of the Boy Scouts that were there in attendance, putting wreaths out, and we went and got a little history lesson. And we do have two fallen soldiers from World War One within a few days of each other that I had no idea that we had that in our in our cemetery, and that was quite moving to be there, to honor them. Holiday Truck Parade, what a hoot. That was great. I mentioned to City Manager Langley that the city of, where is it, over Napa. Anyway, they have a, they have a tractor parade, so we might be able to open this thing up. Means we're in an agriculture community, maybe get some tractors involved in this, but I had a really good time. The group out at Richland Housing, they just came, they were like locusts. They came from every direction when we came rolling into Richland, which was was really, really fun for me. And then the rest of the time, people like Councilmember Boomgarden was saying that on the streets everywhere, I just had a gentleman today stop me and said, what was that that went through my street? And then I went to my son outside. I said, well, that was the holiday parade. Because I loved it. And I think we got a letter or email from someone thanking us for that, a citizen, which I thought was really great. So keep up the good work. Welcome back, Chief. I know that's very grueling to go be away from your own and and your family. And with that, I complete my report, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty much, it's all been said, but I'll recap very briefly. Got to do a lot of the ribbon cuttings before I took off out of town. Chief, congratulations. I know that's a huge accomplishment. You know, the not much activity that I had going on this past couple of weeks, because it was my anniversary, so I was out of town. So thank you, Councilmember Boomgarden and Mayor, for covering for me for my two committees, so I appreciate that, so I could go take care of home first. But I really want to focus, as everyone else has, on the the Christmas parade, the truck parade. Our city team rocked it and cannot really, it's hard to put into words what I saw out there. I got to make the last night, which was District One. We were got back in time for that. Watching people come out of their houses with huge smiles, just lit up, watching kids run and be surprised because they saw Santa and just light up with magic. That's been missing a lot lately, and it was incredible to see. But Chief Alexander, I go back to what I've said about the Fire Department, because I think the Fire Department takes the lead on this, but I'm watching all the other departments do the same thing. It wasn't just our city team, but it was our city teams and their families. I saw the families come out. So it tells you how much our team members and their family care about this community, and you guys are rock stars. And just one suggestion, and I think the Chief Alexander probably took it this year, but Whoville has a chief cheermeister, and I think, Chief, you probably would have got it, but, you know, we'll see who gets it next year. But kudos, you guys are rock stars, and what a gift to the community. So I'll leave it at that. Wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and we'll see you in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. And it leaves me, I'll try to keep this short. I'll start with with mosquito. We approved an, the annual audit, closed session to address employee issue and approval of adjustment to a bereavement policy. Subufka, this is kind of a big one. We're looking at Cerberus Basin Regional Improvement Program Levy Development Impact Fees Nexus Study and Collection Agreement Approval. And what that looks like is twenty-one million dollars for the region and how to come up with said money. And so stay tuned. Regional Waste, we discussed the Zero Food Print Agreement for the SB thirteen eighty-three Recovered Organic Product Procurement Project. And we were introduced to Mr. Scott Schultz, who is the new executive director. In Transit, another audit for twenty-one, twenty-two, and the, something I found out is, if you show up at these meetings, you get appointed to to ad hoc committees. And guess what? So Transit is looking for a new director, because our friend Keith is going to retire. So I got appointed to a committee to do that. And the homelessness, I didn't say that right, did I?
You have a friend who's...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Johnny. I'm just out of it, right? Yeah. Talked about a lot of things, but might take away the top three reasons for being homeless in this area, unable to pay rent or mortgage, substance abuse, lost job, unemployed. And a lot can be said about that. I did attend in Sacramento, down by the Capitol. I was invited to a regional roundtable listening session with California's infrastructure advisor to the governor, Antonio, and I hope I say his name, his name right, Villagroza. He's a former mayor of Los Angeles. And what's interesting is, the mayor is doing a tour of different regions in California, specifically meeting with mayors to find out what we need in our infrastructure. And between the feds and the state, they figure they've got about a hundred billion, with a B, out there for said projects. So we had a roundtable, we went around the room and expressed interest, you know, needs. A lot of it was just the same stuff, you know, failing infrastructure. But, you know, when I when I had a chance and met with them afterwards, I threw out, you know, we wouldn't mind having a an overpass at twenty and ninety-nine and a third third bridge out there at Oswald someplace, so. Intergovernmental Relations Committee, met with the city manager, county CEO, and the vice mayor was there, the vice chair and the chair of the county, setting down some goals of what we're going to look at for next year and how we're going to address them. It seems like there was just an endless parade of ribbon cuttings this last month, which is, again, really exciting just to be a part of that. And it shows how resilient this community has has become. And lastly, I would like to reiterate what everyone else has already said about the parade. I don't know if, I don't know what my expectations were when I showed up, but I showed up out there stationed on Lincoln for District Five the first night, and I got caddled onto that bus, and it took a while, but I think once people figured out we were what we were doing, that's when they started coming out. And you saw the smiles. You saw the smiles, and it was just, then my phone's blowing up, and what's going on? And so, what a neat idea, and thanks to Chief Alexander and staff for making that happen, and hopefully, we can continue that as a as a tradition. And I would like to wish the vice mayor, I hope he feels better, we missed him this evening, and just to everybody else, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And having said that, if there's nothing else.
Waffle Wednesday tomorrow.
Thank you. We've got Waffle Wednesday tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.